...council, February the 19th, 2019, at 4:30 in council chambers. So what I'm going to do is read a statement of the chair first. This public hearing is convened pursuant to section 464 of the Local Government Act, RSBC 2015, to allow the public to make representation to council respecting matters contained in zoning amendment by law number 1085 dot 114 to 2018. Every person present who believes that their interest in property is affected by this proposed by law shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard respecting matters contained in the proposed by law. None of you will be discouraged or prevented from making your views known. However, it is important that you restrict your remarks to matters contained in the proposed by law. When speaking, please proceed to the microphone and commence your remarks by clearly stating your name and address. If they wish, members of council may ask you questions following your presentation. However, the function of council at this public hearing is to listen to you rather than to debate the merits of the proposed by law. In accordance with the council procedure by law, presentations by members of the public shall be limited to a maximum of five minutes each. If a person has additional information that he is unable to provide within that timeframe, he shall be given further opportunity to address council after all other interested members of the public have been heard a first time. Please refrain from applause or other expressions of emotion during this public hearing so that we may ensure as impartial a hearing as possible. After this public hearing is adjourned, council members will not speak to the public on this matter until after the matter has been dealt with at a public meeting. After this public hearing has concluded, council may, without further notice, give whatever effect council believes proper to the representations made at this hearing. So confirmation of advertising and posting requirements. Notice of this public hearing. Hearing was given in accordance with the Local Government Act and the Community Charter by distributing the notice as follows. Publishing in two consecutive editions of the Asousias Times on February the 7th, February the 14th, 2019. Placing the notice on the bulletin boards in the town office and the Planning and Development Services Department on February the 7th. And posting the notice on the town's website on February the 7th and distributing via e-news on February the 7th. So a summary of the staff report. Zoning Amendment By Law Number 1085 dot 114, 2018. Purpose of this meeting is to seek public input on zoning by law amendment number 1085 dot 114, 2018, which received first and second reading on February the 4th, 2019. So the zoning amendment by law, 1085 dot 114, 2018, proposes to change the zoning from R1, single-family residential, to R2, single-family residential small lot on property legally described as lot 621, District Lot 2450S, SDYD, Plan 1950, except Plans 10986 and 13112, 3810, Lobelia Drive. So the first thing I'm going to do is ask for a report from our senior planner, Mr. MacArthur.
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. So this report is in reference to zoning amendment by law 1085 point 114, 2018, the property located at 3810 Lobelia Drive. During the February 4th, 2019, regular opening meeting, council gave first and second readings to the zoning amendment by law number 1085 point 114, 2018. The by law proposes to rezone the property from R1, single-family residential, to R2, single-family residential small lot. The subject property consists of a 1.31268 hectare, 3.24 acre parcel in the southern area of Asousias on Lobelia Drive. The property is currently zoned R1, which would allow for subdivision into single-family residential lots. The proposed new R2 zone would permit single-family dwellings on smaller lot sizes. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the parcel into 17 small lots as shown on Attachment 3, and it's important to note that this is a draft plan, a concept plan, so that proposal would be at subdivision stage. Environmental impact assessment. The property includes the northern section of Sonora Pond, which has been identified as habitat for endangered, threatened, and special-concerned species, including the blotched tiger salamander, Great Basin spade-footed toad, and painted turtle. In conjunction with the rezoning application, an environmental impact assessment was conducted by Valley Environmental and a report provided to town staff on January 4th. Section 6.1 of the environmental impact assessment provides a detailed list of actions to be taken to ensure protection of the wildlife identified on and near the subject property. The applicant must adhere to the following actions either at rezoning stage or at the time of subdivision. That a 12 to 27 meter buffer zone be legally designated by a no-build-no-disturb covenant, and that a physical separation between the subdivision and the covenant area, such as a fence or other means, be placed at the environmental setback to act as a barrier to prevent amphibians and turtles from entering the subdivision. The specifications for the separation will be determined and secured at subdivision So figure 2 here illustrates the environmental setback and the proposed covenant area. Policy bylaws and regulations. Official community plan. The OCP encourages small lot sizes wherever possible. Single-family residential developments are suggested to locate further from the town center, such as in the area of the subject property. Zoning by law. The zoning by law requires a minimum lot area of 400 square meters for R2 zone. The proposed site plan conforms to that requirement. And land use procedure. As per the Town of Asousias Land Use Procedure by law, rezoning application signage was placed on the subject land notifying the public of the pending application. And Local Government Act. Notice of this public hearing was given in accordance with the Local Government Act and the Community Charter by distributing the notice, as was outlined by Mayor McCordough earlier. Road dedication. The Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure has granted preliminary approval for the rezoning on the basis of a couple of conditions. The first being that there be no direct access to or from Highway 97, and the second that a provision of additional road dedication on Highway 97 in the amount of 11.278 meters be taken at, either at the time of rezoning or subdivision. And road dedication along Lobelia will also be required at time of subdivision to ensure the road is at least 16 meters in width to conform with urban residential streets. Rationale for recommendation. Staff recommend the rezoning as there is an R2 development immediately south of the subject property, as shown on Attachment 2, and the development will provide additional housing options for residents. Implications. Community. The proposed rezoning, if approved, will enable a small lot subdivision to proceed. This would provide a new housing option for residents. Organizational. Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure final approval is required upon by law amendment receiving third reading by council. Budget. There are no costs at this time. Significant dates. The public notice mentioned a special open meeting could be convened immediately after this session if council wishes to give the by law further consideration. And sustainability. The proposal will ensure the Sonora Pond habitat is preserved and endangered species protected. So options. One, council convenes a special open meeting following the public hearing and gives third reading to zoning amendment by law number 1085 point 114, 2018. Two, council defers giving third reading to a later date. Three, council requests revisions to the by law before proceeding further. Or four, council recommends any other action deemed appropriate. And recommendation by staff is, depending on input from the public hearing, we would recommend option one.
Thank you very much, Mr. MacArthur. And so the next part is to identify any correspondence that has been, I have it, and so we do have one letter that was included in the printout, so I will not read that one. That is a letter from Ken Nelms, but I will read these others because they have just been, and it's up there, it's in your package. To, this is to the editor of Asousias Times and Asousias Town Council. Subject, are our voices being heard? On March the 28th, 2018, I hand-delivered a letter to Sue McCordough, Gina McKay, and Town Council regarding the parcel of land at 3810 Lobelia Drive, Asousias BC, attached as a copy of said letter. I did not receive any response, but saw that all of the signage had come down on this said land, no further mention about this land being removed from the ALR or anything else concerning development, so thought all had been discussed and this parcel of land was still protected. I now read that this same parcel of land has been removed from the ALR since October 2018, and a proposed low-cost housing is to be built on this land with a fence to be erected around and protected pond. How is that protection for the birds, turtles, and other supposed protected species at this pond? I know that other species are very smart, but for some unimaginable, unimaginable reason, I don't think they will know what fences are for. Also, all of the traffic throughout this new housing sub-project is going to have an impact on all of the areas surrounding the pond. Who is this housing for? We really have provided nothing to attract families to Asousias. Maybe it would be more feasible to look at providing jobs and entertainment rather than just more housing when most of the houses here are vacant through the winter. When listening to others, it seems that the town is promoting Asousias more as a tourist destination. When we have talked with friends from the coast, most say they can't afford to come to Asousias even for a week in the summer due to increased food costs, loss of camping facilities, and the cost of the ones that are available. Seniors who make up a large percentage of the taxpayers in Asousias are finding the increase in food, utilities, and taxes while on a fixed income becoming harder to make ends meet. Sincerely, R. Rolyak. So there was another one. Attention, dear Gina McKay and Sue McCordough, from Mrs. Rolyak again. This was in March. First one was in, this was in March 2018 as well. I wish to let it be known that I very much oppose the property at 3810 Lobelia Drive, Asousias, as being removed from the ALR. I strongly oppose this as the pond, unadjacent to the said property, is home to different species such as painted turtle, cranes, and the great blue heron. Migrating birds also use this unique ALR land and pond as a source of food and a resting place. I have also heard that this parcel of land was protected, so development other than agriculture, fruit trees, and ground crops would not be permitted. The orchard has already been removed, are permits not required to change zoning, and more time given to allow the residents to voice their opinions. I was under the impression that the houses being built by the new fire hall were just that, low-cost housing. Also, it concerns me greatly that agricultural land is being used to build housing when there is already a concern there will not be enough agricultural land available for food in the future. We have more land around the town and even in the town area that is available for housing, so wonder why it's not being considered. We need to keep our ecosystem intact, or we will be destroying the thin balance that we have. Again, I am strongly opposed to any development on this parcel of land. Sincerely, Mrs. Rolyak. The third letter is from Cynthia Morin. Dear Mayor and Council, zoning amendment by law 1085 dot 114, Lobelia Drive, hearing date, I am writing, February 19th, I'm writing to object to rezoning the property on Lobelia Drive to a higher density. The neighborhood is almost entirely single-family residential. A density change to allow R2 small lot is not a good fit for the neighborhood. Respectfully submitted. Cynthia Morin. Thank you. So I do not normally read these, but when they were not included in the parcel, I am required to do that. Next, I would like to ask if the developer would like to come and speak. Mr. Lenko, did you want to come up to the microphone? Please state your name and address first. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Brad Alenko, and I live at 1943395th Street in Asousias, and I am the agent for the owners. I'm just going to make a few quick points, and then I'll listen intently to any of the comments that the public has, and then I may want to provide a bit of a response or an explanation at that point.
Yes.
The proposed rezoning is consistent with the Town's official community plan, as noted by the planner. It's one of two residential zones permitted within the OCP low-density residential land use designation. Not only are smaller lots allowed within the OCP, the OCP encourages the development of small lots, as the OCP used a residential density of 15 units per hectare in calculating the town's future need for single-family residential land. The proposed development will provide a residential density of exactly 15 units per hectare, exactly what the OCP had asked for. Section 9 of the OCP outlines residential objectives and policies. The first policy indicates that the town should accommodate low-density residential densities that average 15 units per hectare. That's an average. Some smaller, some larger. Again, we're right at 15 units per hectare. Policy 98 in the OCP states, it's a policy of the town to promote a mix of lot sizes for single-family duplex housing, including a large proportion of high-density lots to conserve land. Again, that's a policy of the OCP, and I think that's, it's insightful of the town at that time to have done that. We have a dwindling land base. There's been many concerns about the pond, and I know we've discussed this a number of times in the past. We are still committed to preserving and protecting the values in the pond. We've worked with planning staff through a fairly lengthy process with environmental EIA to evaluate what sort of mitigation we can do. The qualified environmental professional has recommended some standards, some walls, some fencing, all for the purpose of protecting that environment. Keeping people out of that area and keeping the critters in that area. And we remain committed to that. And there will be a section 219 covenant. We expected that. That was a recommendation by the qualified environmental professional, and it goes without saying that that section 219 covenant will be registered over the areas identified in the EIA, and that covenant will state no build, no development, and a large percentage, if not all, of those lands will actually be dedicated to the town. There's been some discussion about access and how it may impact. At the present time, we're allowed, I think, 10 or 11 lots we could build today. We're asking for a few more than that. The increase in traffic on the roads will be negligible, and the beauty of this particular subdivision, the location, is that it is right beside Highway 97. A quick corner, you're onto the highway, and down you go to downtown or wherever you're going. It will not have an impact on the local traffic patterns, pardon me. The slight increase in density is consistent with the Town's official community plan objectives and policies, and as stated in the official community plan, will assist the town in better utilizing the dwindling land base to accommodate the town's anticipated growth. And again, when the town did its OCP a number of years ago, it used a density of 15 units per hectare to calculate out what its land demands were going to be to accommodate its future, knowing that we have ALR, knowing that we have Indian reserve, knowing we have some sensitive crown land, the lake, and the American border. We have a very limited land base, and I think the town was spot-on in looking at encouraging some higher density where it can in single-family residential, to add those few extra units in there to make better use of the existing land base. So I'm going to leave my presentation at that for now, and I will, I may-
I will ask you to come back up after everyone else has spoken, if you would like to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have? Thank you. So I only have one person on here who would like to speak, but certainly if there's anyone else after who would like to be included, you're welcome. So Lynn Fraser, would you like to come up, please, and state your name and address, please, on the-
I'm not sure I'd like to come up and speak, but I'm here. My name's Lynn Fraser, and I live at 3600 Lobelia Drive. And I have a couple of concerns about the rezoning. First one is garbage collection. So where there are going to be 17 new places in actually what I would consider a small area, because it's a small area of front street. It goes back where the cul-de-sac will be, but on the front street, it's a very small area. So if there are 17 lots, there are going to be 34 garbage containers on that bit of road every week, except for a few times in the winter, if you're going to have either recycling or the yard waste. So that's, I'm not sure exactly how you'll fit 34 garbage cans out there, unless the garbage trucks can get into that little cul-de-sac and out around. I don't know whether or not that's possible, but to me, 34 garbage cans, no, there is way too many for that small piece of property. Also, adequate parking and traffic flow. So I really disagree with what's just been said, and I think that there has to be adequate parking, which I would say is two spots per lot needs to be there for the way people use vehicles these days. And I also think that we need to have dedicated visitor parking to that area, because as I can see it, there won't be any parking allowed on that little cul-de-sac road. There'll be driveways coming out on each of the properties that are on the road. There will be no extra parking there, period. Our road right now is very narrow, even though the new subdivision place is even more now, our street is very narrow. People don't regularly park on that street. It's used for temporary parking. If you've got company or something, they park there, but it's not parked up all the time. And the only thing I see is if we have a density of 17 lots and no extra dedicated parking, there is going to be parking all the way along that street all the time, and I think it will be very dangerous. The reason I think that is because if you're going to the subdivision from the north, there's a hill there, so that you go up a little hill, and then at the top of that hill, just over it, is where the opening to the cul-de-sac is going to be. You won't see, it'll be like a blind intersection there. Coming from the south, there's kind of a rise, and then a dip, and then a curve. And if you're coming up the road that way, you will not see that spot either because of trees and things. You won't see the intersection into the cul-de-sac at all until you're close, and if it's all parked up with vehicles, it'll be very narrow, difficult to get through in two directions. And if you want to come and sit at my house, when people are going to work and coming home, you'll see what the traffic's like, and I would not say it's nothing. It's, there's a lot of traffic on there. And right now, the people who go down to the south end of town and who live just outside of town, they all come up our street, and there's lots of them, and they go fairly fast. So I think it's going to be extremely dangerous if that street gets all parked up. So changing from R1 to R2 is going to double the increase in the traffic that is going to be there. So right now, I was thinking that there would be about eight lots, the way the zoning is right now, but if it goes up to 17, then you're doubling everything that you're adding. So I think that that's just too much. One other question I just have, I don't know if it's okay for now or not, but I was just wondering if the new subdivision plans will define things like elevations or how much fill has to be put in, because there's some real dips in the property? Is that not a good question for now?
Today, we're just dealing with the, with the land use issue, and the subdivision issue is totally separate, and it would come later.
Okay. So can I ask a question, whether or not that information would be allowed to be seen by the public when it comes up?
Ms. McKay, would you like to answer that?
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. Subdivision proposals are a function of the approving officer's approval process. It does not come before the public. Your comments are duly noted, and will be taken into consideration during that time, but subdivision is not, subdivision proposal is not brought forward to council-
No, okay.
-in the province of British Columbia, not just here. I should always add that caveat at the end.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to come up? Thank you.
My name's Ken Nelms. You've already seen one of my letters. This property is beautiful. It has the nicest, unique pond on it in all of Asousias. It was, that property last year grew melons, totally full of melons. This year, it's taken out of the ALR for single-family dwellings. Now you want to cram a whole bunch of houses in there. Anybody know here the closest fire hydrant to it? The tighter those houses are, the more susceptible to catching each other on fire. Tell me where the hydrants are. Anybody? A long ways away. Now, the pond, this guy's got 12 meters. Why can't it be mandatory to be 27 meters away? You're talking about a wall, you're talking about a fence. What about a rubber membrane? Because the seepage from construction and all these new houses being in there is going to go into that pond. And for one thing, a couple of years ago, there was wood ducks in there that grew, raised a family in that pond. It's a fantastic spot, but the public should have access to view in it, and actually a trail down there to be close to that pond. This idea of blocking off with houses so we have no access to the pond is totally ridiculous. It's just that it's such, it is the only unique pond in Asousias. I don't think, MacArthur, can you tell me are there any other ones? As unique as that pond?
Mr. MacArthur's not here to answer that question. Thank you.
Oh, I see, Don MacArthur, his sign there.
Yes, he has been here as a senior planner for three months, so he's doing a great job by his day. He doesn't have the same background in what's going on.
All right. How many of you in council have been down to that pond, to the edge of the pond? No, one. It should not be allowed to cram houses in that piece of small property. It's too much. The traffic coming out on that road is going to be ridiculous. There are two willow trees, 40 years plus, on there. Is he going to chop them down because they're within that 12-meter radius? Just a few questions that you guys should be thinking about. For none of you to even know where the fire hydrants are, that's scary, and you've approved, you had two readings on this, makes no sense to me. Have a good day.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? You don't have to, is there any, please come forward. Chris.
My name is Chris Stidola. I live at 3610 Jasmine Drive, which, for any of you who know the lay of the land, 36 Lobelia Drive, 3610 is basically the same place. Now, I've been here for 35 years, lived at the same location for 35 years. I'm very proud of my neighborhood. I'm also not really proud of a lot of people in Asousias because of their, what I call nimby's, not in my backyard. This, however, is my backyard. That's why I'm here today. So I'm concerned about the fact that a road that I use all the time, a road that is right on my, right on my doorstep, is going to be, I believe, changed quite significantly, and not necessarily for the better. I'm here to only speak about the road, which is a narrow road. I understand that part of the plan is to redo that road. There is no parking on that road right now. I think that's the way it should be. But the main concern to me is that that will add, that will change the character, I believe, of my neighborhood. I believe that I live in one of the nicest parts of town. I'm very proud of where I live. I'm happy because it's a low-traffic area, it's a low-crime area, it's spacious, it's one of the nicest parts of town, and I'd like it to stay that way. And I'm afraid that putting 17 extra lots with 35-odd cars in that corner is going to be, is going to make my, my life not as good as it was before. I firmly believe that that piece of land should not be a agricultural piece of land. It's inevitable that it gets developed, and I'm all for that. I think that's a great idea. That's what, that's what needs to be done, and that's, that's good, that's going to happen. I think that maybe it might- I think that maybe it might be better left in the, the bylaw or the zoning that's in place right now might be more appropriate to what, what that land could become. I think that by putting that piece in there as it's now planned is going to change the character of my, of my neighborhood and, and not for the better. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Stadola. Is there anyone else? Please come up.
My name is Judy Dodge, and I live at 3619 Lobelia. I am right across the road from this property, and contrary to what the gentleman here said about people will just pop out of that little area and go right around the corner up to the highway, is, to get to the highway, first of all, you've got to come out of, onto Lobelia, and like everybody has said, you're right on a hill, so there's going to be a blind spot there. I, I don't know if anybody has even gone there and stood there to see if you can actually see vehicles coming either way. And also, it's a, a high-traffic area for vineyards and orchards that are out outside of town, so they bring their transport, their trucks, their plants, their vegetables. They, they all travel that road for some reason, and there is no parking at this time, and we know that if they put in that cul-de-sac in there, everybody has at least two vehicles. I don't know where they're going to park unless it's out on Lobelia. And also, three of the lots seem to be extending over into the environmental area. Lots 15, 15, 16, and 17, I think it is, and I don't know why that's being allowed at this time, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. And I didn't capture your last name, I'm sorry. It's Judy?
Yep. Dodge, D-O-D.
Dodge, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this particular rezoning issue? I'll ask for the second time, is there anyone else who would like to speak? And for a third time, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this issue? Okay, I will ask Mr. Alenko if he would like to come up and speak again.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just a couple of points I'd like to make. There was a number of comments made about fire hydrants, servicing, and roads and so forth. The subdivision process, and we have, actually have engineered subdivision design plans prepared now. The developer will be reconstructing Lobelia Drive in front of the property. Dedication, as Mr. MacArthur indicated, of 16 meters, so some dedication to the town to extend the right, right-of-way to 16 meters. New curb gutter, asphalt, sidewalk will all be extended from the end of where the existing sidewalk is in front of the Sonora property. So, that, that road will be completely rebuilt. It's up to the town whether they want to allow parking or not want to allow parking. In terms of the, the, there was discussions about garbage cans, all lined up on Lobelia. The subdivision that is being proposed is a Town of Osueus standard subdivision. It has a 16-meter-wide road. It has a cul-de-sac that meets the Town of Osueus standards. That cul-de-sac and road entrance will more than accommodate every truck that you can bring down there, fire truck and everything else, garbage trucks. It will be like any other cul-de-sac in the Town of Osueus where your garbage cans are out there. In terms of parking, the town does have a standard. It's required to have two parking stalls on each lot. Each lot will have two parking stalls. Interestingly, on Lobelia, if you take a look at the actual alignment of the road or the position of the road within the right-of-way, for whatever reason, it is off-center right now, it's slightly to the east, which means that there's going to be more boulevard on the west side, which means there'll be just that much more room on that side if the town wanted to have the parking there, but there's going to be lots of, lots of visibility there. In terms of the servicing, again, everything will be brought up to standard. There will be new fire hydrants put in place, so the neighborhood will benefit from fire hydrants. There will be, I believe, a fire hydrant that's right at the intersection, so all the folks that have homes that are right across the street will benefit from the new services that will be provided. This will not double the density. There was a comment about doubling density. It will not double the density. The density is more than seven right now. If the zoning doesn't go through, it will be at least 10 on the site. There was a comment about the lots projecting into the setback. The reason that that was done is that we needed to get the, the minimum lot area. The building envelopes are able to be maintained. We will have further discussions with staff about how that's going to shake out. We may end up reducing the density a little bit in that area, but the way it is right now, it's not uncommon to have an environmental covenant on your property. Many properties have got environmental covenants on them that protect them from disturbance, so that's, that's not an uncommon thing. It's not out of place at all. As I mentioned, the parking will, will occur on the site. There is two spots will be provided on each site, so there will be no excess parking, there'll be no surplus parking or people wanting to park on Lobelia. And I guess the other couple of things, points I want to make is that this project is kind of riding on the coattails of the one that was done 15 years ago, and that project is very similar in nature. It's the same density, it's the same everything. There's no problems with it. In terms of the pond, there were no environmental requirements when that project was built. That developer did what he felt was best, and it worked out. The, the residents were cautious about that pond, and it's turned out well. This developer is taking a much different approach, and they've actually hired an environmental consultant to determine what is good and what's not good, and they are committed, and the town will hold their feet to the fire to ensure that those requirements are there to protect that pond. So, that pond will be protected in a manner as, as good or better than what it, than what it presently is, with the added benefit that the town will actually own that land. The town never did get the land around the pond on the other side where the existing development is. That's all private land. The public has no access to that land. This will be public land. That's all I have to say, your worship. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did you have a question, Counselor King?
Yeah, I did have a couple of questions, actually.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know whether we want the property or not, or if that's normal procedure, if this was there before.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Counselor King, through the chair. In this particular case, we do see a benefit to the, to the area being dedicated to the, to the town for protection and perpetuity. It's not necessarily a requirement, no.
So, then we'd have to maintain it or something?
Well, by maintaining it, we mean leave it in its natural state. That's would be what our objection would be.
Okay, thank you. And my other question is, I heard, we're actually talking about changing the zoning, so if you weren't requesting that, technically, you could put 10 or 11 lots on this property as it sits there.
The subdivision plan that was shown up here, unless you looked really carefully, you wouldn't really notice. There's a few extra lots, but-
No, I, my question is, if you didn't, we're talking about changing the zoning.
Yes.
If we didn't want to change the zoning, technically, legally, you could build 10 or 11 lots.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
So, then I heard you might be building 15 or 17, so is that an undecided number? Like this map shows 17, you mentioned 15, so to me, it only sounds like you're asking for four extra lots.
Well, the, the density, what the zoning does is that the zoning is allowing a, a zone of R2, which allows lot sizes of 400 square meters. So, we have designed the, the property to meet that, that standard. 17 fits in there, under that, under that zone. So, it is 17. It's, it's not like we're asking for a number. We're asking for the zone, and we're going to work within that zone, and that zone is 400 square meters. And as, as we've talked with the town recently, we're going to discuss whether that number is going to be going down a little bit in a few areas, but-
I just want to clarify, yeah.
Yeah, welcome.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'd just like to point out, too, that from all that's been said is that we are looking at rezoning this from R1 to R2. Okay? That's why we're here. The subdivision bylaw will come into play at a later stage, and that is the, and that was what several of the questions were about. Ms. McKay has been busy taking notes. She's very good at looking at all of this stuff, and she will make sure that all of the things that have, that you've brought up have been looked at and appropriately dealt with. But today, we're only looking at the land use issue from an R1 to an R2. It's already, the property is already out of the ALR, so it's not, do we keep it in or not? That issue has already been dealt with. So, thank you to everyone. We did have a, some options, counsel, and I'm wondering what you would-
We have to close the meeting.
Oh, I have to close before I deal with, I'm, I'm sorry, you have to do that at a special open?
Yes.
Okay. Pardon me, I thought we could do that beforehand.
So, the process would be to close this meeting and then open, because you've advertised a meeting.
Okay.
You would open the meeting, and then at that time, you can decide whether you want to do third reading or, or, what's the term? Delay the third reading till, till the next, next regular council meeting. That trace will be there.
Thank you very much. I missed that step. So, I will declare the, the public hearing meeting closed, and I will get Mrs. Hilson to-